Okay, I think we're now ready for agenda. Item two, math academy, high school math.
So I'm just here with teachers to talk about the summer academies that happened this summer. We had a mini high school academy and then our third year of our Project Achieve, which is our K-8 math summer academy. First one I want to talk about is the high school summer academy. This was the first year we were able to do it. It was over the course of two and a half days, and so teachers volunteered at that time to come in during the summer. These were some of the main objectives they worked on, so they focused on the eight research-based teaching practices, which is embedded within our standards. And then they focused on creating an environment with their students to encourage them to learn how to examine, interpret, and think critically about math concepts. And then they really focused on strategically picking and implementing high-quality tasks that supported and built up students' perseverance and their problem-solving. So we had nine, it was our first year, we had nine participants from the high school, and we did have from the alternative high school as well. And then these are just the courses that those participants covered: algebra one, algebra two, geometry, calculus, and then college algebra. This was the basic structure of the day. In the morning, they focused on content, and then the high school didn't necessarily have books, but they did X book serves out of different books. And in the afternoon, they focused on pedagogical, pedagogy, and then worked with their peers on planning and collaborating. And then I asked, Sherry Martini and Jennifer Whitley helped lead the high school academy. They also helped with our Project Achieve, which is the K-8. And so we met with them at least every day, sometimes twice a day, and kind of went over how the academy was going, how are the teachers doing? And they were just always so complimentary of our teachers, how, you know, how much they invested in what they were learning, how they wanted to grow as educators, all for wanting to do what's best for students. So I could not put that in words. It comes better from them. So I asked each of them to send a little clip, and they're not very long, they're about two minutes, on their perspectives of the academy, you know, how they felt, thought it went, and just so you can hear the things they have to say about our teachers. So this is Sherry Martini. She teaches at K-State, and she helped to lead as well as Jenny Johnson.
Hi, my name is Sherry Martini from Kansas State University, and I had the opportunity to work with the high school teachers this summer at a mini academy that was modeled after the work we were going to do with the K-8 teachers in our Project Achieve. We had the high school teachers for two and a half days, and I am fairly certain that they would have happily spent more time with us. I really appreciated working with this great group of teachers. Being a high school teacher and working often with high school teachers, I find that they tend to generally be more concerned or focused on content, but this group of teachers was equally, or maybe more concerned about pedagogy and meeting the needs of their students. They engaged in tasks and discussions about those tasks, both the content and thinking about the misconceptions students might have, the approaches we could take when using these types of tasks. And I think in the feedback we received, that was one of the things they appreciated the most, the opportunity to look at really rich tasks. I found them to be very reflective, very thoughtful about how to integrate what they were learning with what they were doing. They were hardworking. They often stayed beyond the time that we were scheduled to end, looking at things, talking to each other, talking with us. They got out their curriculum materials and really examined that and considered the alignment of the content and practice standards to the materials that they were using, and considered possible adjustments they might need to make, and so on. They collaborated with others and planned for the upcoming school year. I feel certain they're doing great things with what they have learned, and I really enjoyed it, and I would welcome the opportunity to work with them again. And I hope to touch base with them and see how their work is going this school year. But thank you again for the opportunity to work with them.
So she mentioned that, sorry, I can't talk in quick because I can't talk quick. She mentioned that, you know, they stayed past the hours and continued working. So their last day was only a half-day, and so I think they were going to lunch at Mookin and Lisa, and then they were all meeting at someone's house to continue working. So I was just so impressed with how much they poured into it, and then they were so hungry for more, that they were asking for more, more than two and a half days. So, great. So I did, we have one teacher that did attend that academy, her name's Lisa Morton. She teaches at the high school, and I'll let her kind of share her experience and...
Sorry, I made notes on my cell phone, so use that. One thing I learned from the summer institute was, or from the summer session, was to have multiple entry points for each of my lessons, so that students who got off task or couldn't get into it at the very beginning could have an entry point to get into what we were talking about. So often I get stuck in this endless trail of notes, then activity, then notes, then activity, then a project, then a test. And this kind of made me break through that shell, because I finally saw teachers who knew how to teach and could teach it at a professional development kind of seminar way. Recently, I feel like I've stepped up in my projects and my games in class. My fourth period precisely is one of the most, has been one of the places where I've made more activities and more projects for them, and I feel like they're the most energetic class that I have. They often come in and feel so energized and ready to do something instead of being told something. So it was a great learning.
And this was, this is Ms. Morton?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Okay, well, thank you. I do have a quick question here as you're doing the presentation, based on your earlier comments on one avenue, and the class size, the ideal class size for avenue. I wondered whether you cringed a little when it was reported at the high school, a class size of, what was it, 32 or something to that effect?
Oh, yeah. I cried when I heard that number. None of the kids are going to get a worthwhile experience from that, because it's nearly twice, and sometimes three times as much, as what needs to be in there. And I remember talking to the teacher who had that class, and she said she didn't even have enough seats on the first day for all of the kids, which I, it was really real sad.
Well, I'm sorry to put you on the spot there. I wanted to mention that, because obviously the teachers involved in this program are passionate in what they do in communicating to each student. And that is a challenge, I think, we recognize, time to time. The big board that we mentioned earlier on the high school and at the middle schools, sometimes you can't fit everything in, as was reported. The result can be some surprise situations. We'll just have to keep working on that, but I thank you for allowing me to put you on the spot.
No, go for it, anytime. Thanks.
So then the next, the next week, we started our Project Achieve. This is the third year for this program, and it was grant-funded, and it covered grades pre-K through eight. So again, it was a two-week academy. The teachers gave up time in the summer. Their objectives were similar to the high school. They did have, obviously, a little more time, so they covered a little more content. They worked on mathematical models and how those are used to investigate and predict the world around students. They focused on what it meant to build procedural fluency from conceptual understanding. And then they focused on that teaching practice of implementing high-quality tasks, which is kind of what our high school, which is what our high school worked on as well. And then our math summit, which is in two weeks, our fourth annual math summit, is focusing on as well choosing a high, high-rich task and implementing that in an effective way.
Could I ask, this is part of my own, trying to put it all together, but you talked about the math summit. Is that part of this program?
It's separate. It's our fourth annual one, and we bring representatives from every building, all our principals. We usually have about 80 to 100. It's during the day, usually a half-day, that we talk about. We usually have some sort of PD or speaker, and then we do roundtable discussions on what's going well with our math curriculum, instruction, where else do you need support? And we've done that for four years. So we've just connected it kind of to the summit this year to continue that, choosing our high-quality task. Project Achieve, so there was 32 participants in that. We had teachers, grades pre-K through eight, special ed resource teachers, interventionist coaches, and then 11 of those were new to the academy. They had not been the previous two years, and then 21 were returning. They'd either been the year prior or two years, or two years on a row. The structure was very similar, content focused in book-grade level, grade-level book studies in the morning, and then the afternoon was focused on pedagogy and collaborating and planning with peers. This is Jennifer Whitley. It used to be Jenny Johnson, and her former role was a math coach and educator at K-State, so that's how we kind of got connected with her through the grant. She changed positions this year. She's a lecturer of mathematics, is her title right now, at Park University, but she also submitted a video. And both of these guys worked with both of the academies. They just each picked one to kind of share some feedback with you. She talks a little bit more about how it was set up, the structure, and then she also gives you some feedback on the teachers.
Hello, everybody. I'm Ms. Jennifer Whitley, and I was the mathematics coach and instructor for Kansas State University and Project Achieve for the last three years. I'm excited to share with you our goal with Project Achieve and the difference I have seen that it would have made in the Garden City district. Project Achieve is a unique professional development opportunity, as it brings together math education professionals, mathematicians, and K-12 teachers across Kansas. Our goal was to increase teachers' pedagogical content knowledge in mathematics therefore for two weeks in June. Teachers attended an intensive, all-day professional development, with the morning focusing on increasing teachers' mathematics content knowledge, and afternoon focusing on developing innovative, research-based pedagogical practices for math education. In the morning, we have mathematicians, math faculty from K-State introduce and expand on unique mathematics topics that can be integrated in teachers' K-12 curriculum. In the last three years, we have focused on the history of math, number theory, mathematics modeling, and some computer programming. These are unique topics that are not traditional in the K-12 curriculum, but can be integrated and taught along with the standards, the mathematics standards. Teachers also attend grade-level breakout sessions focusing on the math topic and how it relates directly to their grade level, P2, P5, and P6, P8. This is where I have seen significant engagement and improvement of mathematics knowledge in these sessions. Teachers delve much deeper and think about their grade-level content in ways that they have never thought about during these sessions. Teachers come away from these sessions with a much deeper understanding of the mathematics they're teaching, along with effective practices that they can directly apply the next school year in their classroom. Last summer, we also focused on developing teacher leaders by choosing a couple of teachers to lead these breakout sessions. Both their increase of knowledge of the math standards and the NCT and teaching practices was just amazing, both for the teacher leaders and the participants. In the afternoon, math education experts from K-State build teachers' instructional practice. In the last years, we have focused upon the eight research-based teaching practices for effective mathematics teaching highlighted by the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics and CTEA. In the last three years, we have focused on effective practices for building procedural fluency on the foundation of conceptual understanding, including the practices implementing tasks that come with reasoning and problem-solving, and how to facilitate meaningful inputs in the mathematics classroom. Teachers are given tools, are given strategies, are given resources that they can directly apply into their classroom, and also hopefully spread to the rest of the district. Following up with teachers through this school year, we see how they directly are applying their knowledge to you in the summer. We see more student engagement in the mathematics and more vigorous instructional tasks. Students are communicating mathematically and engaging in problem-solving. I'm happy to say that the hard work that the teachers have put in have made a significant difference in students' mathematical learning. Thank you so much for hearing about our program. Crystal has been greatly involved here the first year as a participant, and I know she can answer many of your questions.
So we did have a teacher that was part of the book studies, and I don't know where she is, so I'll have to follow up with her, so something must have come up. And then we did bring Tammy Moore. She's from Edith Sherman. I always mix her school, Edith Sherman, right? Yes. Okay. And she's a research teacher, so we're sort of grade K through four. And then I didn't know if you were returning, and I'm going to change that.
I was returning.
Okay, how many years did you go?
I went in 2017, 2018, and it was an awesome experience. I'll say that now. During the time, I wasn't real sure. These educators put us as educators into a position that many of our children feel. A lot of times, they would ask us questions that were like, ooh, way out there, and we got to feel that uncertainty, that insecurity, and not knowing the right answer. Base numbers. Some of those were like, whoa, my goodness, I learned that in college and I haven't used it since, and oh, my goodness, I thought I'd do it again. There was a lot of really great information as an educator, a lot of things that we could put into place, how to take from a lesson and put it out there to the kids, maybe in a way that's not necessarily in the box. There were some games that we played that I have implemented with my students each year since then, different ways of looking and presenting information, making sure that my instructions are explicit. One of the activities we did the first year was in, we had direction, but it wasn't necessarily, we had to do a drawing, but it wasn't necessarily real explicit, so we all came away with a different idea of what we were supposed to do. And seeing how not being real, real in-depth with our instructions, how it can really make a task so much harder on everyone. Another thing that I walked away with was, as a mom of a four-year-old, I, as a teacher, learned all the developmental stages in college, but not having a child at home, I really had no clue what my daughter should have been doing or what she shouldn't have been doing. So as a mom, it was awesome to sit there and say, oh, well, she's, she's putting numbers there, and she's counting, and, you know, understanding what she was actually, where she was developmentally. Another thing was the growth mindset. That was just an area that really has helped me in my classroom. I do teach special education. I was thrilled that I was chosen to be in this Project Achieve, because I didn't think that was something that necessarily sped teachers got into. And to be able to take my kids and work with them on the growth mindset, so many of the time, or so much of the time, my kiddos are like, I can't do that. And to help them to reprogram their thinking, I can't do that yet, but I'm working on it. And I think that was a very strong part of this entire, the two years that I went to. I really think that that was a major part of learning how my language in the classroom affects the kids and how they, how they are learning from that. So, I mean, that was a big part of my work.
My last slide is the end. Did you have any questions? I don't have a question.
More questions?
It is so bad to say that Project Achieve is a grant. We had put aside money to fund it when year three, and K-State came through and said we have some extra funds, so we were able to carry that over, but we used our extra funds from the high school folks, so they got paid $100 today, so a total of $250. And then Project Achieve folks got $1,000 for their two weeks of time, so, but they didn't do it for the money. I mean, they came back year after year, and it was hard work. I remember that first year, walking in, and they were learning the history of math, and you could just see their faces like, this is so hard, I'm never going to be able to do this, and it was awesome. I don't mean to jump in on Crystal's presentation, but when I was first hired for this position, Dr. Carlin told me I was going to have math. I probably cried a lot that first year, because it was so overwhelming and difficult and an uphill battle. And he assured me he didn't want to climb the mountain straight up, he wanted to make progress. And with the math academies, the summit, we're getting ready to have the fourth summit, it was just to change our mindset that this is a process, and we're willing to help and support you. It's probably my greatest accomplishment, I think, in being a part of that shift and digging in the last three or four years. So having Crystal though, who really is good at math, has taken such a pressure off of me, but it is, it's probably my, I told her, I get teary-eyed watching that video, because those people from K-State came in year after year after year and just wanted to come back. So, anyway, thanks.
It's amazing. I really feel like we've built a collaborative team, our math departments, through that, through that Project Achieve. They're constantly reaching out to each other across buildings, and we had a few from the parochial schools that attended once, so reaching out to them. I just feel like they have a team of support, that they've kind of built that relationship over the summer. They have, the Project Achieve, they both have, it's called Basecamp, it's kind of similar to Dropbox, you can dump and add things in it, that they started over the summer, and my emails just constantly giving up teachers, adding resources, and sharing, and asking questions, so just a great support system as well throughout the year, so.
And building on that, you can go in there, it's not just our school district that we can get information from, it's across the state, because we had access to other teachers from across the state. So we're going to ask them to make more resources.
Morning, Jess.
I have a question. I'm curious where eighth-grade honors math teachers went. Did they go to the high school one, or did they go to the...
They were doing the Angel Lines, attend the high school.
So they were in the high school academy? That's what I'm trying to...
They were offered. I don't know if those particular teachers attended, but they were offered to attend. Actually, I think they gave them the opportunity to go to either one, when they qualified to that.
Okay. I was just curious. So I knew that they were teaching a high school curriculum, so I wasn't sure which one they would have gone to, because they might have needed developmental stuff in the Project Achieve, so I was just curious.
Yeah, they were offered Project Achieve three years, and last year they were offered to go to either one or the other.
Great, thank you.
This is just a thank you for you guys for coming, for two hours of your evening to present, all the teachers that came, but I really appreciate the support, the district leadership support, and your guys' support in all of this, and the funding and just backing us, and just, it takes a lot of work, and without that, we couldn't be there, so.
It's exciting to see what you're able to achieve.
When the kids like, at home, we said math. Like, I'm like, we've made, we've done a lot, we're doing really good things, really good things, and it's our teachers and our kids.
I'm bored. Any other questions? See, did you ask, I just, three years ago, four years ago, whatever it was, when we looked at our math performance, we were pretty disappointed, and I really want to compliment Renee and all of our teachers and Crystal, because since then, we've seen lots of great improvement, and we continue to see improvement. We still have a ways to go, but that wouldn't be happening without the effort and the determination and the time and the work that they're putting into it. The academies have been great support for our teachers, but it's really the hard work that they're putting in that's making that difference. And that's, but it's kind of working like it should. We're providing the support, and they're taking it and running with it, and so that is really awesome to see, and so many people out of hand in that, so everybody, that's what's made the difference. That's it, all of that. It does raise a question, see, we talked today, where are we headed with this? We have this, this is the grant process, and then we scaffold within some budget support, so where are we headed? So we've got this fourth math summit coming up, so hopefully we'll get some feedback and learn something from that. And we have been able to set aside some of our professional development money to be able to support, and I think we have some of that left, because K-State was kind enough to find that other grant, so we've got a little short-term window here where we can still continue to do some things, but we'll continue to refine that and continue building on the model where we really are trying to help teachers stretch themselves and make an impact with our kids. You can't live off grants, I realize, but is there any opportunity for additional?
Well, we saved some, so what we, Crystal and I are doing a little brainstorming, but we think we're going to offer a K-12 mini summer institute this next summer. So if that works, and we'll probably have to set a limit on attendance, so we can sustain that work.
Is there any, a grant involved in that or events?
We'll be looking for more grants, but we also have to be cognizant of the link grant, and a lot of teachers are going to have to commit to two things, so the two-week summer institute might need a lot with Link, with OCE this summer as well. So we're going to have to share the love a little bit there and be respectful of what literacy means as well.
Thank you. Any more, board? Thank you so much for the presentation and all the information. Pretty exciting stuff, not only on the collaborative side, but also earlier when you hear the online say, what do you like about school, and they say math.
Yes, good training.
Marching on in the agenda, where I think now to unfinished business, agenda item G. And the first on that, G1, is nutrition service report, Ms. Johnson.
All right.
So this is a retouch base of...
Right, right. And I'm going to go through my first part, I think you have it in your board packet, so if you have any questions, but I don't get to talk to you guys a lot, this is about the charge policy, I don't get to tell you other, the other part of nutrition services and other things that we're doing. So I will go through this in a, in some time. This is our budget, and this is our budget for last year. Last year, we had a very, very good year, and there's a lot of reasons why we had this budget here, and I'll kind of go over that. But if you look at our income and our expenses, we did come out pretty good. As a business person, you like that. As a state, they don't like you to get too far above that balance, but there is a reason for that, and I'll get to it with you in just a second. Our cost, this will come into play here a little bit later. Budget per meal, if you look up there, lunch, it cost us about $3.50 for lunch. Last year, we only got $3.49. As a business person, that scares me. I lost one cent on every lunch I served. But breakfast, this is our big thing. We, it cost us $1.29 to produce a breakfast, we got $2.04, we made 75 cents on each breakfast. And to me, breakfast is the most important meal of the day, so I thought that was pretty earth-shattering, I guess, because lunch costs more, and we serve more lunches, but breakfast kept us, kept us out of the red. As far as lunches, student lunches, we almost served a million lunches, 95,000 lunches. Breakfast, we are at 41, almost 42,000. 100,000, sorry about that. Okay. How we did that, we tightened our belts. We do detailed financial reports. We make sure that our meal, if our meal, if a meal is costing more than we think, we look at different entrees, we look at milk cost. One of the things that really helped us this year, our milk cost didn't go up. At one year, we were paying almost forty cents a carton for milk. And that's when you have a budget of a dollar to a dollar ten, twenty for food and forty cents of it is milk, that doesn't leave a lot for the rest of your food. Meal change, like I said, we did some meal changes to make our dollars go further. And the other reason we had to tighten our belt is we have some old equipment out there. We have some equipment like in Kenneth Henderson, Edith Sherman, that were built with the building back in the seventies. And so this year, we actually had to replace a kettle and a steamer, and now we're starting to have, and KH, I don't know if you guys, if those of you that go to KH, one of these times, just go back in the kitchen, look at that freezer, it's busting at the seams. So that's another thing that we're gonna have to budget to, to replace. We, we really look at staffing, we try to utilize our staff efficiently, and we do meals for labor hour data. All new positions through, we, we take them back to six hours. We empower our office, I've empowered my office staff that helped me with this because in nutrition services, we have seventy-four production staff, twelve elementary cashiers and four warehouse personnels. And that's a lot of people to supervise. It, it might not seem a lot, but when you have them over at eighteen schools, you can't be at eighteen schools at one time. So the office staff, I sent two of them to Oxford, Mississippi, which was a venture for them a couple, two weeks ago, and they came back with all these training ideas and ways to help the department and meet our goals and help me be a better supervisor. This is to other districts and net with other directors. I think that's very important because I want to know what other people are doing. I know we're not perfect, so I want to feed off of them and in turn, they can feed off of me. Actually, I'm gonna go up to Aleka on Friday and I'm very, very excited because they are doing a lot of cool things. They, they have a lot of alternative breakfasts, they have a power hour lunch, which I'm really excited to see at the high school. They do a lot of breakfast in the classroom, and they also do at-risk meals, which I'll talk about here in a little bit. And I just like to think that we take a common sense approach to problems. My door is always open, I'm here for parents, I'm here for teachers. I, I, I just think that we take a common sense approach to make our services better to benefit the school district and the schools.
Can I ask a quick question?
Uh-huh.
Where you have all the positions at six hours, who are your, I assume they're production staff, I'm not sure, the ones that are at satellite kitchens where they need to go to other kitchens?
Yeah, and that's a great, that's a great question. The six-hour positions are the assistant positions. And so when you have your satellite positions, we leave those at those hours. Now, just because they're six-hour position doesn't mean that they work over, like for enchilada day, they may work eight hours that day, and then I say nine pies, and then they may work six, so. But for Jenny Barker and Kleinell, they're, I believe that the staff members work seven and a quarter to seven and a half hours. And those are very important because they're on their own, so.
Right. And I know they go pick up the stuff and then they come back out.
Yeah, yeah. So they, they have, they have, they have a lot of responsibilities, so.
Is that more than one trip a day?
It just depends on the menu. A lot of times, though, if they have the breakfast out there already, they'll just go straight out there, but most of the time, they stop, give their breakfast and take it out and then come back and get their lunch.
And is that to their discretion or is it, does that come to you?
It's, it's to their discretion. It just depends on how it works out in the, they go satellite out of Charles Stones. And so it just depends on how busy Charles Stones is, how much they can do. And Jenny Barker and Kleinell, unfortunately, we just have little home ovens out there and in order to, you know, I would love to put institutional ovens, but in order to do that, we have to put, put a fire suppression system and all that. So they, they are limited in that, that respect. We don't have, they have to haul all that food out there. We don't have, they don't, they don't have hot boxes that go out.
And they're the only two that are satellite?
They're the only, well, they're the only two that have to take their food. So I, I call them a transportation satellite.
Okay.
We have like Buffalo Jones, Jimmy Wilson, Georgia Matthews, that they have hot boxes that are taking to them, so they don't have to try and transport the food.
Thank you.
They definitely have a lot more responsibility. It's fair, I mean, I have the two girls that I have in those right now, they're doing, they're doing a great job and that's, that's, I always look, it's like, okay, can they handle that position? Okay. This is, okay, this is really incredible. Increasing breakfast participation. We're offering more choices, we've changed the menu this year. One of the things, the state kind of kicked me in the hind and said, hey, we look, we're looking at Horaceville, we're looking at the high school. Our participation was awful. At Horaceville, we were only serving like twenty percent of the free kids. And I'm thinking, oh, my gosh, why? So I talked to Brad and we was like, okay, why, what's going on here? And so we said, okay, let's go, but the kids are in the gym, let's take the food to the gym. We took the food to the gym. No, that wasn't cool, they didn't want to eat. So we finally decided we were going to allow the kids, after the first bell rang, allow them twenty minutes to come down to the cafeteria, grab a lunch, and eat into the classroom. Boom. We have tripled our participation at Horaceville in one week. And that is awesome, guys, because these kids weren't eating. I'll show you the numbers here in a second. These kids were not eating. And that is like, it's not because they couldn't afford it, because most of them, a lot of them were free. So that's exciting. Garden City High School, I don't know what we're gonna do. It's exploding, it's awesome. We're doing breakfast after second hour, or breakfast after first hour. We started out in the, three years ago, we started out in the PE hallway because the coach, Coach Hill came to me and said, hey, my guys are hungry, they don't have time to get up and eat. Like, all right, let's try this. So we took it down to the PE hallway. Well, that caught on about second semester, guess what? All the different academies were running down to the PE hallway to get the second chance breakfast, and that was causes and issues. So the next year, we moved up to the cafeteria so it's more centralized located. Well, we have eight minutes, eight minutes to get all these kids through. Well, a hundred sixty, two hundred kids, that's not a problem, but we're serving over five hundred now of the second, second chance breakfast. So this year, we opened up the snack bar. So we have, we have two places in the cafeteria and the snack bar. Those freshmen, we're still trying to come down and not get back to class in time. So now, we have the cafeteria, the snack bar, and we are taking the chaos down to the freshman academy. So I think, I think towards the Thursday, we served five hundred and forty second chance breakfast. That's a lot of snack breakfast. Overall, everybody's serving more breakfast. We want to provide all students who want to eat a school meal the opportunity to do, so that, that's why I'm here. And I'm passionate about that. And I know our principals are passionate, our counselors, nurses and teachers, I can't tell, I can't tell you enough how, how supportive they've been in our plus to make sure.